I want to thank everyone for showing up to this special meeting tonight. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On May 31st, 2023, notice was sent to the home tribune, the Staleger, Union County Source, Tapapinto, and the clerk of the municipality. I want to remind everyone that this, no smoking is permitted in this building at any time.
Roll call.
Ms. Rosada Quezada. Ms. Thomas.
She's in.
Present. Present. Can you hear me?
Ms. Armstead.
Hi, guys.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
Mr. De La Cruz. Mrs. Fleming. Ms. Pino.
Present.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Present.
You're going to go straight into the personnel committee, though.
Do you have comments from the public?
No, we don't have it here.
No. We just call comments for the public on agenda items.
At this time, we're going to have comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand, Feet Here on the online meeting forum. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Hi, my name is Craig Keller. I look at 120 Donaldson Place. I'm going through your agenda items here, and I see on page three, item 4A, the power professional. And, God forgive me, I may mispronounce this, I'm sure I wrote Miss Penarina. She's working Monday through Thursday, June 26th to August 10th, at Linden High School Academy. And then she's also working at Inroads Opportunity School in Roselle from 7:10 to 8:18 from May 30, 2 o'clock. If you ask me, it sounds like she's got to be in two places at once. Can somebody explain that, please?
She's following a particular student who'll be switching over to that area. She won't be double-dipped or double-paid.
Okay. Thank you.
No one else? Okay, what about online? Anyone have any comment?
No.
Okay, so now we're going to move forward to our next agenda item, the Personnel Committee. Dr. Tomasek.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a special board meeting, which I want to review and go over a few things that are happening in the district. Tomorrow, we will have our kindergarten moving up ceremonies, although there is a threat of rain which may move them indoors. And then on Friday, our fifth grade moving up ceremonies are planned there, too. There's a little bit of rain in the forecast. We'll play that by ear. Next Monday, June 19th, the district is closed for the Juneteenth holiday. On Tuesday, we return for the last three days of school. They'll all be half-days with no lunch served. On Wednesday, June 21st, we have our schedule for the middle school graduations on Tiger Stadium. Right now, the weather forecast is showing cloudy with a moderate temperature. And then next Thursday, at 10 o'clock in the morning, is the high school graduation. Again, weather forecast right now is showing cloudy with a lower temperature. Next Thursday is the last day of school for students. And in the evening of Thursday, we will have the 12th graders will go off to the senior bash. Next Friday is the last day of work for our 10-month teaching staff. And then the following Monday, on June 26th, we start our extended school year programs for our special education students and our summer bridge programs for other students. I want to cover the few things on the agenda this evening. First, we do have a retirement, Dr. Plummer. Dr. Plummer started his teaching career at Linden High School in 1997. In 2005 through 2014, Dr. Plummer was appointed as the vice principal at Linden High School and then later McManus Middle School. Dr. Plummer also served as acting principal at Schools Number Two and Eight. And then he was appointed at School Number Two as principal in 2014, and then later appointed as principal of School Number Nine in 2016. He will be retiring his tenure as principal at School Number Nine. We thank Dr. Plummer for his passion and dedication to the students and families of Linden. The Linden Board of Education wishes him all the best and hopes that he enjoys his retirement. Let me just walk you through the agenda this evening. The one item that was always on the agenda was the appointment of the next superintendent. I'll come back to that. And then we found that we had a couple of more items that we had to put on the agenda, principally because summer school was starting on June 26th, and our next board meeting wasn't until June 29th. So we wanted to clean up some appointments and things that had happened. Item number two, of course, is Dr. Plummer's retirement. Item number three are all adjustments, principally for the extended year program of adding or removing staff that were previously appointed. Number four is appointing various personnel for summer school. A is the extended year program. B is for School Number One. C is for School Number Eight. D is for McManus. E is for additional personnel at Linden High School. And F is a paraprofessional working at Inroads Transition Program. Then lastly, we have item number five is we had a staff member that needs to go with our Kain Scholars, which is the last week of June. Item number six is to appoint one of the lead teachers at School Number Nine to finish up the school year until the end of her 10-month year, and then have Mr. Walters watch both schools for the rest of those dates until July. We had one employee that needed a sick bank. And then we had the Education Committee needed to add a field trip as we had our Linden High singers sing at the Pride Event in the city. And the buildings and ground, there was a late-breaking request from the Recreation Department for the use of the gym for the Gregorio basketball camp. Lastly, I'd like to extend my personal congratulations for Atiya Perkins. I can't think of a better person to take over the district. I've enjoyed working with her, and she will have my full cooperation in the coming weeks and the months ahead to have a successful transition, and I just commend her. Madam President, that completes my remarks.
Need a motion in a second to move the...
I would like someone to make a motion to move to appoint our superintendent, our new superintendent.
I think we're going to move them all via consent, so we'd ask for a motion to move items one through...
Through nine?
All numbered. One through, hang on one second. One through 10 on the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like someone to make a motion.
Respectfully approve motions one through 10.
Someone?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Okay. Rule call? All in favor? Or any discussion? Notes? Anybody in line?
They wouldn't discuss now, the people on... Oh, you mean Malaysia, I'm sorry.
All right, so rule call.
Ms. Thomas.
Not unmuted. Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes, items one through nine. I would like to recuse myself from item 10.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Dr. Tomasek, seeing that we did a great job getting our new superintendent, I guess we need another assistant superintendent.
Yes, that'll be posted tomorrow.
Yes, and I would hope that we would start looking internally first. What do you guys say?
Tough shoes to fill.
Right? Yes. So I would like, you know, possibly we should start looking internal first because, you know what? We want to, we believe that there's a lot of talented people in our school district who we feel would be able to fill the shoes of our next assistant superintendent.
Yes, that position and the elementary principal will be posted tomorrow.
Okay. I guess this is going to be a short meeting tonight, but this has been a real exciting school year, and we are coming to the end of this school year. A lot of things has happened. One of the things that I'm excited about is our new superintendent. I'm also excited about our new, our virtual yearbook of virtual graduation. Can you guys imagine that on graduation day, people in different countries in America could actually sit at home and watch their relatives graduate? What an awesome, awesome thing that we are doing. We are looking forward to do it, to continue doing a lot more amazing things for our school district to keep Linden first and Linden moving forward.
We'll need a public comment.
Our next agenda item is, of course, comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand, Feet Here on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of this meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dani Orlean. As you can, as you can hear, I lost my voice, but I'm going to do my best to speak. I reside at 516 Carnegie Street in Linden, New Jersey. I'm here not only as a longtime veteran educator in the Linden Public School District, but also as a parent with three children in our Linden Public School. And I'm here today just to take the time to congratulate our new superintendent of school, Ms. Atiya Perkins. I have known Ms. Perkins for a long, long time, and I know, working under the leadership of the great Dr. Tomasek, you will be an amazing leader for our district. And as the new supervisor of ESL and bilingual education, I look forward to working with you, and I look forward to moving our district forward. We have a lot of amazing educators in our district, a lot of awesome teachers and administrators, and they work tirelessly to ensure that our students have the best education in our Linden Public School. And too often, when you watch the news, you often hear the negativity. But, you know, my husband and I, we started a campaign to shine light on our amazing students that have graduated from our amazing Linden Public School District. And I thank you and I welcome you with open arms, and I am excited, and I can't wait to work with you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start out, Rob Mengele, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey, LHS Social Studies teacher, LEA president. Good evening. I'd like to start on this momentous evening by acknowledging Dr. Tomasek. You came in under unusual circumstances, and while we didn't, while we didn't always agree, we were never disagreeable. We worked in the direction of what was best for staff and students, always. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Perkins, congratulations. Your Linden resume is thorough. You've spent your career here, working in the community and helping our students. As you move into your new role as district, as district superintendent, I am looking forward to diving deeply into the issues facing our district and working to face them with the thoughtfulness and care that the issues deserve, but also with the thoughtfulness and care that our amazing staff deserve. I know you know firsthand how amazing the staff here is, but I'd be remiss if I didn't remind you. If I may, I'd like to close with part of a poem that I have on my office wall. "For a Leader," by John O'Donoghue, it feels appropriate as we move into a new era of leadership. "May you have the grace and wisdom to act kindly, learning to distinguish between what is personal and what is not. May you be hospitable to criticism; may you never put yourself at the center of things. May you act not from arrogance but out of service. May you work on yourself, building up and refining the ways of your mind; may those who work for you know that you see and respect them." Thank you, y'all.
That was very good.
Good evening. My name is Gwendolyn Long, 906 Bowers Street. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say to Mrs. Perkins, congratulations. I grew up with Mrs. Perkins, and to watch her start out as a, as a teacher and to walk her way through, I wanted to say congratulations. I'm proud of you, and I know you will take us to higher heights. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Craig Keller, 120 Donaldson Place. I just wanted to wish Dr. Tomasek well and his future. And Ms. Perkins, I am looking forward to working with you. And again, I enjoyed our meetings that I've had with both of you over the past year. Looking forward to many more. Thank you again, and congratulations.
Is anyone online?
You go bring him through. Do we have a speaker online ready to speak?
Hello, how are you?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Mercedes Williams. I just want to congratulate Mrs. Atiya Perkins on being the superintendent in our district. A shift has come, and God is doing something amazing. He is doing something phenomenal, and I am so happy that she is our superintendent. Mrs. Perkins has been my mentor over the past 10 years. I started student teaching in Linden, and I am currently in an administrative internship right now, and I am so thankful that she is an amazing mentor. I'm so filled with joy. Ms. Perkins, you are phenomenal. You are going to do a great job. You are doing great, and thank you. Thank you for everything that you have done for Linden. Thank you for this shift.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
So I would like to hear from board members.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Yes, this is a great honor and a privilege. I met Ms. Perkins recently, and she has always had a smile on her face, and she, even when stuff was tough, she still was smiling. And congratulations, and I appreciate you, and I know you're going to do a phenomenal job. Continue to do a phenomenal job. And Dr. Tomasek, we know how I feel about you.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you, and I know we're not, we're going to see you more. Okay? Thank you very much, and we appreciate everything that you're doing for us and everything that you will do for us. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. You got this.
Thank you.
You got this. There you go. No tears, okay? No tears.
Okay.
No tears, okay? And thank you very much. I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Could you have, see if Malaysia want to say something? Okay.
I absolutely do. Congratulations, Ms. Perkins. I'm so sorry that I'm not going to left with you to give you your flowers, but you are more than well-deserved of this position, and I'm so thankful that you have accepted and accepted the challenge. Dr. Tomasek, I know that you will never be too far from us, and I thank you for all that you have done and will continue to do. So I look forward to this new change, and I am glad that we can all adapt to this new change.
Yes.
So congratulations across the board to everyone. But, Mrs. Perkins, this is a big one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Tomasek, thank you for taking me in with open arms. I'm pretty fresh on the board, so this is all I really know, but it's exciting to know that Ms. Perkins will be taking it on, so it won't be too new for me. I wish you the best. Thank you for taking me in with open arms as well, and the best of luck.
Thank you.
So I'll start off by just saying thank you to Dr. T for all of the phone calls, texts, questions. I know that I've been pretty annoying because I feel like this was trial by fire, and I've had to learn so much. Just thank you for the guidance and for teaching and for showing us the ropes. You definitely will be missed. As far as Ms. Perkins, this is such an incredible accomplishment. I am beyond proud of you. You are the definition of the sky having no limit. You are inspiration to so many young women that are out there that may have thought it probably was not a possibility to become a superintendent and be in such a prominent position in a, for a school district. So thank you for doing what you're doing. I personally got to witness you in action when I went to, we, Linden, we went through a lot. And I went to the schools, Saskey and I had did a school visit, and I saw how the, how much of an impact you had on our students and how much you meant to them and how you were able to offer comfort and how you were able to console the children. And that resonated so much with me, and I just want to, again, just say thank you. I'm so excited for you to step into this role. It's, it's inspiring for me, so just keep being you because you clearly deserve it, and I really do wish you the best of luck. Shout out to you. You did your big one.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Tomasek for all your, for improving, helping improve in this district, for your great leadership skills, and for your transparency with the board members. Also, congratulations, Atiya Perkins, for being designated as the new superintendent. I look forward to working with you, and I'm glad that you got this position. Congratulations.
Thank you. Dr. Tomasek, I'm not ready to say goodbye yet. I can't.
I have another board meeting, so I'll still be here on the 29th.
Yes. In the last year, we have all grown a lot. Our community have grown a lot, our students have grown a lot, our teachers have grown a lot. I think that within this last year, not only have we grown a lot, I think each and every one of us have learned to listen and to appreciate each other. In the last year, I also had an opportunity to spend more time with our new assistant superintendent and now our superintendent. And if it's anyone deserving of this position, I would say is Mrs. Perkins. Her leadership style is one that is needed in our district. She serves, she listens, and she cares. And for anybody that's working in the education industry, that's the kind of leadership we want. Someone who really listens to students and parents and who care about our district. I remember when I sat with her once, and she said, "I have, I have given, I have been in Linden for over 20 years. I have been through the worst of Linden and the best of Linden, and I will be here. I stand firm with the residents, the students, and the parents of Linden." And that is the kind of leader we are looking for. I, you know, there is stuff that is happening right now in this school. Her creative, the way she thinks about our students, the way she thinks about our students, the future of our students. Our superintendents don't only check grades, but they are visionaries. And when we sit and talk, she, she makes me so excited about being a board member. We had a conversation recently, and we were talking about how it's so important for every one of our students to graduate, not only English, Spanish student learning a second language, but all English students graduating proficient in a second language so they could all compete globally. We are, when we, when we thought about the, the, the virtual yearbook, she was, she just took over, and she got it done. When we, when we experienced grief, she was right there, consoling parents and students. That is the kind of leader we want. I am very hopeful, and I really, I am expecting great... And I really am expecting great things from our new superintendent. Congratulations once again, Ms. Perkins. And I am looking forward to a new school year where our students would go out there and do great things. And don't forget, we have all these moving up, moving up graduations, mini graduations. And we would like you guys to partake in it. We also have our middle school graduation. We have our high school graduation. There is so much going on. We ask each and every one of you to please stay connected. Because together, we are stronger. And if we use and if we focus on synergy and not energy, we will all be able to move mountains. I thank you very, very much for coming. Anything else here just to close? Well, I guess I have two people I'd like to hear from tonight. Maybe one of T's family members. And I would like to hear from our new superintendent. I think we all deserve to hear from our superintendent.
Should I sign? No. Good evening. I thank you. My name is Shereen Monique Cunningham-Wakis. I am a T's sister. I was hoping for an opportunity to say something. As we're sitting over here talking, we were wondering if it was okay to come up. No longer a resident of Linden, New Jersey, but grew up here. So we just wanted to make sure it was okay with respect to come up. As her older sister, I've had the opportunity to probably know her before she knew herself, right? But I want to say, I've heard a few things tonight. We understand that the story is amazing for her to be a student here in the district growing up. As we pulled up, I was reminded that this was the first school that she ever taught at. And it comes full circle as we are here tonight, appointing this new awesome position. But I have heard everyone talk about her leadership style. I have heard that she is an awesome, phenomenal leader because of the way that she listens. But I want to add one very, very important thing that was instilled in me and her and our brother from a very young age. It's that heart. And we're going to add the third L, which is love. Atiya just does not love leadership. She just does not love Linden. But she loves education and she loves these children. So she will advocate for the children. She will advocate for their parents. And she will advocate for everyone here in this district that is going to be able to support that every single one of these children get the education, not just that they deserve, but that she was willing to be able to receive. So I love you.
Love you.
The countless conversations from position to position, who can we say has taught at many, many schools in the district? So she knows firsthand what needs to be done. But most important, she knows how to get it done. So I thank you all for having us. And Atiya, I love you. And I look forward to all the awesome things that God will allow you to continue to do with that heart and which you will lead with love. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other family member have anything else they would like to share?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamaya Griffin, and I am the daughter of Ms. Atiya Perkins, aka Mom to me. As I was sitting over in the seats, talking with my dad and my aunt, I just realized that this was the first school that I won a hula hoop contest in. And I got my first male teacher here. But also that I was able to see my mom teach here. Our classrooms were right across from each other. So to have this full circle moment is just one of my wildest dreams. And I'm so proud of you. And I always tell you that as a woman and a leader and educator who oversees so many students, as your daughter, I never felt that anything was taken away from me. And so the way that you're able to lead with love but not take from anywhere else, and it just continues to overflow into the work that you do and your passion for learning and teaching and just making sure that the students and the staff are heard and listened to and that action occurs, I love it. And I'm so excited for you. And I love you so much. Congratulations.
Oh, that's nice. That was very nice, young lady. I like that.
Yes, she is.
I guess it's your turn.
It's my turn.
Yes.
It's literally my turn. Good evening, everyone. Madam President, members of the board, and everyone out there online, as well as in the audience. I am honored and yet humbled to accept the position as a superintendent for the Linden Public Schools District. A few days ago, my pastor reached out to me just to check in. And I informed him that this moment was my current reality. And he replied, "Wow, they are really entrusting you with a lot of responsibility." Upon my reflection, the thought of, "Wow, they really are." So now the words "wow" and "trust" have intertwined in my inner core. And that's what I believe is how we're going to take this district to the next level. I'd like to start by saying thank you to Dr. Tomasek. The experiences that I've learned from you have been wow. Your stories, but more importantly, your intellectual brilliance. You provide us with insight. And you cause us to think what is best for that moment, but more importantly, the future. So I'm extremely thankful for our time. I want to express to the Board of Education for entrusting me with this responsibility to lead our district. I'm so excited to work with all of the stakeholders who are connected to Linden. Because we get to ensure together wow experiences for our students. I truly believe when we think about wow with education, it's predicated on trusting the process of what education means and owning the value of it. Two important quotes that I live by come from John Dewey, a philosopher, an educator, and Nelson Mandela, past president of South Africa. Education is not preparation for life. Education is life itself. Education is the most powerful tool in which you can use to change the world. I truly believe the power of education as it transforms lives. Linden community, as your upcoming superintendent, I plan to emphasize the importance of a strong education system. Quality teaching matters. Cultivating relationships must matter to every member of our school district. Our district staff is indispensable. When you ask, they say yes, without a shadow of a doubt. My goal is to make sure that everyone feels valued and just happy to be a part of this amazing district. I am elated. So I believe it's imperative that we all take a stand and invest in the next generation, not just in fracture of our technology, but to support systems that will enable our students to thrive academically, socially, and more important, emotionally. Every student under our care needs to be provided with an education that empowers them and it ignites their minds and curiosity. We have to prepare everyone to understand that as we navigate through a global world, we have the tools of education. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you to elevate our district. As your superintendent, I plan to build strong partnerships with everyone to ensure that we're doing the best for our children. So the time is now to reimagine the word "education." I'm committed to working towards this vision, I mean, the vision, by leading with authenticity, integrity, transparency, and an inclusive decision-making spirit so that every student has the opportunity to thrive because of education. So in conclusion, wow. Thank you for trusting me to serve as your superintendent. Thank you.
Well, you know what they say, you save the best for last. And that truly was the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess stand with us to close. If anyone have anything else to say, I would like to make a motion to close the meeting. Oh, I'd like someone to make a motion.
Motion to adjourn this meeting. Can I respectfully ask for a second?
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Yes.